...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Roll call, please.
Baker. Bassett.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Beverly.
Present.
Barth.
Here.
You have the January 4th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any questions, additions, or corrections?
I'll prove the minutes as written. Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
You have the approved bills list in your packet. And some of you didn't have a chance to look at them before the council meeting because you didn't get your packets, so why don't you take a minute, look them over. Do you have any questions?
Hey, Shaw, on the Clans County Sheriff's Department, the fourth quarter incarceration, has that been running, the average for all last year was around $10, like $10,000 per quarter?
It's a little less this time, it's usually $12,000.
It's almost probably closer to 40, over $40,000 a year.
Hello, Sheila.
Everybody can check the time, do a look over the bills, but I'll make the motion play on call.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Baker? Yes. Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Present.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Next on the agenda, we have some visitors here, Justin called me and wanted an opportunity for some people to tell you, I guess, that Hicksville has a need for housing. So I would ask those of you that are going to come up and speak, since there are several of you, just to take a couple minutes. At the end, if council has any questions for you, then we'll address them.
I guess I'll say, before you guys go down there, that it's been secret, it's been a week and a half, they've got a couple meetings, the Water and Sewer Committee, and I had one from Mayor and Mike, and we put the Hicksville Golf Course for sale, and we've been approached by a Burton and Amish fellow to buy it as a cattle farm, we've been approached by a developer out of Columbia City to develop that. And after dealing with it for two years, we're back complete full circle to where we were two years ago, that they feel that we need to have a sewer out there to make the lots come out, basically to pave the road. And so we talked this week about seeing if you guys would, I don't want to say the word partner, and try to bring sewer out to us, and everybody work as a community, try to bring housing to Hicksville. And I talked to Mark Yoder, Jason Schoolway, and Taylor, and I talked to him a lot later from the school. I don't feel that it's just a Justin Kuhn, Tony Nyswander thought that we feel we need housing. I asked Mark, you know, Mark, his building house in town, what his thoughts and concerns were, so that's just one of the reasons I asked these guys to come talk and see if there is a need for housing, and if there is, can we all figure out how to do it?
Okay. So let's start out with Taylor, would you please go to the podium? If you want to speak, if you don't want to speak, that's fine, we'll just go on to the next person that does want to speak.
Justin asked me to stop by, we obviously had several conversations just over the course of, I guess, since me moving back to Hicksville. I can express, since moving back from Cincinnati, there haven't really been a ton of great options hit the market. Kels and I decided that we wanted to be in town, not move outside of village limits. So we found the best option possible, and then decided to renovate it through and through. Now there's the CRA, which is starting to kick off, which is a great step in the right direction, but there's really not a plethora of options when it comes to great, great housing options, especially for younger families like ourselves. Your options are either poor quality, and it's going to take a lot of money to get it back up and running, or I guess into a condition that you feel comfortable with, or you've got to build new. And there's not really a lot of availability or space for places to build new. Like, I know Mark searched for quite a while, trying to find lots to build. I know a couple other local couples that have expressed interest in building, one couple here out of Brad, they searched for a long time to try and find a lot as well. So it's limited. I think there's a lot of things that we could do as a village to encourage that, whether that's, you know, I've got, we've had some conversations, Diane, just about possible options as well, and I think we've got, there's an opportunity here to open up some land to develop, to offer that. From what I've heard conversations I've had with Justin, it sounds like a pretty good opportunity to have a developer front the cash, and I understand that things didn't work out with Justin and Tony, but there's another option. We've got two options here, either open up land for development and hopefully attract younger families, encourage people to build new houses in the area, or a cattle farm. I don't think anyone would agree that that's the best use of that land. So I would just, I guess, encourage council to at least engage the conversation and put our heads together and figure out a solution.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Go ahead.
I assume Justin asked me to speak because I probably bugged him more than anybody about this whole process. We sold our house in 2015, and patiently waited and waited and waited on, hoping for the opportunity to buy some land out there, and it didn't, it didn't work out. We did, we were able to find land in town after looking high and low, and probably very, came very, very close to moving out of town because there's just no, or out of the, out of the city, even in Fort, you know, Indiana area we looked, because we could not find anything that we liked around this area. And if we did, it's nothing for sale. So I guess I'm not here to, you know, just, I'm not here to sit there and say, you guys, you should do this, you have to do this, whatever, I'm just saying, if you almost lost a lifetime resident and employee here, you know, for 32 years, I worked my whole life here, lived here my whole life, and, you know, my wife almost moved out of town because of this, and to me, that was, to me, that seems to be a problem. But I don't know, I was, I'm hoping it still does get developed, we would still be interested in probably purchasing a lot out there if it, if it comes to that. And that's probably, that's really all I have to say.
Who's next? Hello, Jason.
Hello, Diane. About three years ago, I purchased 14 acres, it's actually residential property. I didn't know much about the housing issue probably until then. I've got a farmhouse in town that I fixed up, and I'm really not looking at buildings, anything new. But ever since I bought that farmland, I've been approached multiple times, people wanting to build, they say you can get a $100,000 home in town that you got to put $50,000 in, or you can move out in the country and buy a $300,000 house. There's really nothing in the market that a lot of these people are looking for. I'm not, I'm not interested in anything other than a pumpkin farm, but obviously there is an option, I don't know if it's the only option, but I, ever since he's bought the golf course and talked about developing it, I have been around town, it doesn't look like there's very many lots, I know out there on Spencerville, they're building a house, looks like maybe another lot there, maybe on Chicago Avenue, there might be a lot, but there's probably not more than a handful of lots in this town. One of the things, like Mark talked about, was possibly, you know, moving, the last thing we want to do is, is people that want to live here, because they can't find a house, or something that, you know, a newer house, or somebody don't have to pump a lot of money into, is relocating to the Leo, or whatever, so. But just a little bit of my experience, because I do have a little bit of land now that, you know, there is more of a demand out there than I probably knew four years ago, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to comment on our need for housing?
I think Keith Kenchman is coming.
Okay.
Later.
All right.
He said he was running late.
Okay. All right. We can give him a chance. Does anyone at the council table have any questions for any of them, or comments regarding the need for housing in Hicksville?
Well, we know there's a need for it, council's not against it, period. And we went through this eight months ago, and we came to you and said we'd go to Haver Drive, you could tie in the sewer there, but you went the other way to the health department due to septic system, correct?
Because I thought we were worried about the lift station attending.
And that was another thing, that we would maintain the lift station, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've had people send, I don't have Facebook, but people said you posted stuff on Facebook about selling the property, does the village want cattle, farmers in, or they want housing? We'd love to have more housing, but last time I knew where, we left it, went back in old minutes, the May 9th meeting was where it was voted 5 to 1, Ron, go to no, to let you guys tie into our existing on the other side by the cemetery to tie into the sewer. And so I don't know where, where we're at here now, because everything was going to be, I, I thought at that time, we're waiting on you to sell lots and to build, build houses, put the infrastructure in for the road, I mean, if I bought a house back there at number 2 T Box, or, you know, number 3 T Box back there, I'd like to have a road, so I can build a house on it.
It's about $1 million to put the road and all the infrastructure inside the development.
Justin, could I get you to get the microphone, because we've got people that will be listening to this, and they might not be able to hear you, I don't know.
I just don't want Facebook to act like we were completely against it.
No, I'm not saying.
Voted yes to allow it, even though the majority always voted yes.
Yeah, so it's about $1 million to put all the infrastructure inside the golf course property, and when Tony and I decided that we weren't willing to risk the money to run it from the cemetery and put the money into the golf course, then we said, let's go to the township, see if we can get wells and septics and go around that avenue. So we did, and they approved 1 acre lots, it was its own well and septic, so that gives 34 lots out there, so 34 executive lots. I truly don't feel there's 34 executives in Hicksville that can forward 5, 6, $700,000 homes, because the lots are so expensive to pay for the road. So the lots are 50, 60, $70,000, then you put a $20,000 well on top, or a $20,000 septic and a $5,000 well, you're 80 to 100 grand, there's not many people that can front that. So that's why I told Tony, I'm out, let's sell this, this isn't going to work. So the developer approached us from Columbia City, and he said the exact same thing my cousin Roger said two years ago, the lots need to be 85 foot, there needs to be X amount out of them to pay for the road, to make it all make sense. So we said, we're selling it, we don't care. The developer said, I'm willing to risk the money inside the development, I'm willing to risk a million plus dollars, and he's a home builder too, so he's going to build spec homes, but I'm not willing to risk the money outside the development. So if the city doesn't feel that there's a need for housing, there's not a need for housing.
Well, we never said that.
Yeah, that's just what he said. So if I'm going to come to Columbia City and I'm going to risk my money, I would expect the city, if there's a housing problem, to partner with me and risk their money to get it to me. So my cousin Roger has purchased Cedar Creek Golf Course over in Fort Wayne, they ran the utilities to him. Now I understand some developments, not all developments, the developer does the whole risk. Union Chapel by Parkview, the city isn't participating in any of that, because the market's so hot. Hicksville doesn't really have a very hot market, we don't have builders beating down our door, a local builder wouldn't build out there. I've caught probably 50 to 60 builders in the, what do I want to say, Home Builders Association out of Fort Wayne, I got one builder, Windsor Homes, to commit to come into Hicksville and build 3 lots. So there's not a, every urgency for people to come, bring housing to our town. We have a guy from Columbia City who's willing to risk his money, I'm not willing to risk my money, Tony's not willing to risk his money now. We've decided, we're not developers, we, if, if the property gets developed, we feel it needs to be done by a home builder, so they can build the homes and put up specs. You don't go to Jim Schmidt's car lot and come to an empty lot, you go to a place where there's inventory. So the only way to sell out the lots is to have houses on them. So who better to sell it than to a home builder that's willing to build his inventory? So when we come, two years ago, I know you guys said, yeah, we'll accept it, but Justin and our Ann and Kay holdings has to take the whole financial risk, run the utilities to the town, and we didn't do it. So we tried to say, how else can we do it without spending so much money?
What happened with Jerry Hayes, weren't they going to pay for the sewer line?
They're doing the TIF, so the county's willing to give back a TIF. Ron, go ahead.
We've got a meeting Wednesday, it's going to be with commissioners, township trustees, we're going to figure out who is willing to pay for what, who's going to maintain what, who's, we're going to know exactly every step there is to take before we make the decision. That meeting is 3 o'clock, Wednesday.
See, and then it was packing, sorry, most of us didn't get the, our agenda this week because of the weather on Saturdays.
Well, that wasn't, it wasn't going to be addressed tonight, we simply had people coming to tell us we have a housing need, that was not a decision over tonight.
True. We had an initial meeting with Tony and Justin.
Yes.
Jerry Hayes and Mark Schlau.
Yeah, we kind of skimmed over that.
Right, and then Water Sewer Committee met, I asked them to come on board with, you know, personnel, had a weekly meeting, and I, and I had a good idea of bringing everybody to the table that has interest in all this, you know. Justin's being told things, we're being told things, they don't always line up.
What is that, just so I know? Because I don't want to make it look like I'm a liar.
No, 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 no.
I guess I know what you're talking about.
Or do we want to look like, we're, I'm just saying, you know, some of the things that Jerry may have said, or something that commissioner said, and it hasn't been witnessed by the village, if everybody's sitting here.
Right.
Everybody knows.
Right, because I agree 100%.
And, and I thought you had agreed that that was a good idea.
Yeah, no, that is a good idea. So the way that it's been talked about with the, and all the way down to, we just have to get the paperwork drawn, but there's no sense to pay the $4,500 attorney fee to get it drawn if it's going to be in a different name, is the county's willing to offer a TIF, which is a tax redirect. So 75% of the property taxes would go to whoever fronts the money. So what we, what my cousin Roger has done, because I call him and ask him his advice, I mean, he's a professional developer, it's all he does, here in a 4-inch forest main from Cedar Creek, a mile and a half out to him, it was $28 a linear foot. So we're at 4,000 feet, so you're talking about $120,000 in sewer pipe. Now that is private money running it, that's private money running the pipe. Now I know when municipalities do stuff, you guys have to get pogo mowers involved, you have to get bids, you have to do tons of other things, just like building a commercial building. So what I recommend is let private money put the infrastructure in from the Haver Drive hookup, from Mark Haver's house to the golf course, and then buy it back within 30 days after it's put in. So I think Jesse said in the Water Sewer Meter, you guys pay $68 a linear foot to put in 4-inch forest main. If a developer puts it in, $28, you guys are saving money, and then the lift station was quoted $80,000 for the lift station. Now that's the same lift station my cousin put in Cedar Creek, and it supplies 126 lots. So you're talking a $200,000 investment from the town to help a housing need. Now, if you guys feel there's housing, and I know the Haver Drive property's been brought up numerous times, I encourage the town, if we feel that the golf course isn't the right location, to purchase some ground, put in your own road, put in your own water lines, put in your own sewer, and open up some housing to people like Mark Yoder's family or other families that are looking to leave our community. We can't afford to keep letting people leave our community. So there needs to be an opening of housing. I think it's a good deal, it's a golf course, because we've got an out-of-town developer willing to risk his own money, and he's a home builder. If you just go in and lay a street and a road in a piece of property, you still just have a piece of property with the road. Again, we need homes, we need homes built up, so people can purchase the homes, so.
Any other questions for Justin? I see we have Keith here now, and I.
Can I say one thing about the TIF? Before I step down? So the TIF for the county, and that's the meeting we're having Wednesday at 3 o'clock, so if, I'm just going to use the number 250. So if the town puts in 250 to run the lift station in the town and the sewer line out there, you'll get the property taxes back until you're paid in full. The TIF goes to whoever fronts the money. So if the developer puts in a million, and the town puts in 250, you spread that out. So 75% of the property taxes come back until the, both developing parties, or it can be three parties, are paid in full. So you have to risk money to make money, and I know that we sit around, we talk about doing, I'm not saying we, I mean, just society, but we are becoming a suburb of Fort Wayne, and I stress that. On Friday nights, when you drive through Hicksville, the town's packed, we have restaurants, now the town's booming, now we need to get more people to turn us into a better and community of Fort Wayne, so.
Thanks, Justin.
Keith, if you would like to speak, would you please go to the podium?
Sorry, I have length.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, you know, from a school's point of view, that in 2009, our open enrollment was 47, I believe, and just the other day, I checked it, and we're at 89 people that open enroll into the district, which is great, that's great, it's more than doubled. And we were contacted by five different families last week, by a neighboring school district, interested in open enrolling for next year, for various reasons. And then I also wanted to mention that two years ago, we took our preschool unit, and we were concerned if, if there was really a need for enlarging the school for preschool purposes, as the state talked about mandating preschools for every school across the state, haven't come there yet, but we always try to be a little bit ahead of the game. So we did a waiver where we could have double the kids in the preschool units, to see if we could in fact support two different preschools. And for the last two years, we've, typically our preschool units are from 10 to 14 kids, a morning session and an afternoon session. With this waiver, we were able to do 20 to 25 kids in the morning and the afternoon, if there were enough kids. And we are between 20 and 25 kids, and have been for the last two years, for both the morning and afternoon session. So that's telling us that we definitely have a need for preschool here at the school. And then we also are short some high school classrooms because of our enrollment growth, not just from the open enrollment, but we have kindergarten, the kindergarten classes for the last three years have all been well over 80, and so we're experiencing a shortage out there. With that said, we have plans of putting a levy on, which we've already indicated that to the community, and then plan to build a field house out back that is going to have two preschool rooms, that we'll be able to move our preschools out there, which will open up some space inside the school for our kindergartens and first grade, and then also have a couple high school rooms out there, as well as some other spaces that go along with the field house. But my point is that, you know, in the 10 years that we've been out there, if you remember back 10 years ago, the state, when we built the school, they said that our enrollment was declining, and they actually wanted us to build the school for 700 and some people. At that time, we had almost 1,000 then, I think we had 900 and some, 950. And Dr. Miller at the time argued with the state for a long time, and eventually they were able to, he was able to convince them to build the school. What was that, Eric, for what, 9?
994.
994.
Close to 1,000.
Yeah. And we've been consistently over 1,000, 1,000 students for the last several years, so I think the state was wrong in their prediction that we were declining, which to me says a great thing for Hicksville. There are people here that, that want to go to school here, and with that said, they have to have the proper housing. And I know that there's been a lot of people, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but I could probably think of at least 10 families from Indiana that wanted to move here from Fort Wayne, because they want to be a part of a smaller community, and their kids go at a more, smaller public school as opposed to Fort Wayne public schools. But they could not find housing. Some of them stayed where they were, or went to other places in, in Indiana, and I know there were some that purchased homes that like in Edgerton, and then opened and enrolled their kids to Hicksville schools. So, you know, I, I have no opinion what, you know, Justin and Tony are trying to do, but from a school standpoint, I can tell you that we are not declining in enrollment out there, it's just going the opposite, and we want to attract families that are hard working families to our community and to our school as well, so that's pretty much what I wanted to say then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're certainly proud of our school.
I've got one question for Justin. You're just looking at the sewer right now, nothing but the water. Because I know I'll find out more if I come to meeting.
There's enough well for the water.
Okay, so if we take this in septic, you're talking, I'm guessing, what, $75, 50, it's probably $75 a person?
Yeah, so that number just got brought up loosely in a meeting.
Yeah, right, so I'm just doing the math, and per lot, per house, we'd have revenue of $900 per house.
What, you're saying the $50?
Okay, we'll say it's $75 that we charge per lot, septic. Or is it not per lot, that would be per house, since it's? Per house, okay, per house. So I did a little math there, and that would be revenue of $900 per house.
See, a couple years ago, when we started talking about this, my big concern was, well, Justin had thrown the number out of $50 as a example.
Yeah, well, that's.
And I, I said at that time, I don't want the people that live on the front of Haver Drive paying the sewer, and that's not annexed to the village.
We can talk about, but we need revenue for the sewer, and that's one way to get, and I think we'd get the money back, let's just put that out there.
The guy's in the meeting, perfect, as he says, when he quotes a job, he tells his estimators, get as much as you can, but don't lose the deal.
Right.
So $70 was just a number that was thrown out, if you get $100?
We'll say it's 75, just throw the numbers out. Yes, we're going to talk about this again the 25th with the committee, but, you know, a little less than 1,000 per house.
Troy might be able to answer this question, one thing I've had in my mind, and I can understand, I can't, because I asked, I can't remember, maybe it was Mike, I asked Mike, because the property's not annexed into the city. So that's been a hiccup for some of you of the property not being annexed to the city. And I said, what's the biggest concern about that? And you, you want to get the 1% tax, which I understand, that's great. Can we, and Troy questioned, every housing development in Fort Wayne pays an association fee, they pay in to paw the streets, they pay in to take the sidewalk, all the stuff. The township? Say you might be able to, I believe, saying, did Warren say you guys would take over the road, township would take over the road if people, township specs? I'm 99.9% sure.
We would take over the upkeep of the road.
So snowpawing?
If it's built into the county's tax.
So what I was thinking is, if you guys are worried about the 1% tax, can we put a, on the development out there, put on basically like a homeowners association, that, I don't know what it is, we come up with an average price, and everybody that lives out there pays, I made this number up, $800 a year association fee? Now, if you can't call it a tax, or you can't call it an association fee, can you call it a sewage treatment processing fee, or something, to get around the tax word? And now you're getting your annex taxed. It's just called a different name, if that's the hiccup.
Yeah, the problem with that, there are other problems with that, is that there's other people that are outside the village limits that have sewer, and they're not paying the same fee, and you start getting into some.
These are new rules we're writing, and the people that's going to be buying the lots are going to know what they're getting into before they get into it.
That doesn't always make them, but it's satisfactory, but I understand where you're coming from.
And that stuff, when I, I asked Troy and everybody to be the county, the township, that was things that.
that was things that we were going to talk about at that meeting on, or going to talk about that meeting on.
But it sounds like we're willing to listen.
There's any way.
That's the key, that's what Taylor has, hey, at least work with you.
Let's have that meeting on the, on the 23rd and not tonight.
Yes.
All right. Well, we're going to go on with our meeting then. Thank you for coming, everyone. You're welcome to stay. All right, we have our boards and commissions and you have minutes in your packet, nuisance board. And have you had a chance to see? Okay. Pretty much, well, I give it, pretty much, for those that are sitting out there, we're gonna, we have a house that burned on West High Street that we are going to do a demolition on this spring. And we discussed the fact that Kirk Miller's cleaned up their lot nicely and stuff down.
You were right. Go ahead.
On Hick Street, Oak Street, I guess, that's considered. So that's probably, that's pretty much what the nuisance board is working on, is getting the house on West High Street demolished. And any questions about that since you tried to read it? All right, here's the next one. We had correspondence to the zoning inspector concerning a medical marijuana processing facility. And since you haven't had a chance to read the email about it, I guess we can talk about it again at the next meeting. Does anybody, for the people who haven't all seen it in their packet, I mean, yeah, is there any, I mean, Ron, you knew about it, so I don't know if there's, if you want to have a discussion or anything about it, but, but we could also put it back on the agenda for the next meeting since everybody didn't see it.
Whatever you think is right, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we will go on to the park board meeting minutes from January 16. They're in the packet. Looks like they're planning a day in the park, tentatively scheduled for June 29. Mike was telling me that they're looking for volunteers to be on some committees to help plan the event. And I thank Corey Wan for becoming president of the park board and Staff Mazur as secretary. And it looks like they need a couple lifeguards for the summer. Do you have anything you want to say about the day in the park?
Day in the park is something new for Hicksville. We've had some people ask us if we could do something that's inexpensive, but the whole family and the town or outside people can come down and participate. So we're asking for organizations, churches, businesses, if, a 3-on-3 basketball tournament, a home run derby, bingo. We want to have some books for the kids and food vendors and things like that. So like I said, low cost, have people come into the park. We have a great park and utilize it for the day. Like I said, now Val and Gary, we've been working on that, Corey, Wan also. But we're going to set up some subcommittees to contact the organizations, the businesses, individuals, and hopefully we can turn this into a nice event for this year. We had to set a date so that would everybody know. As of right now, I know if you have any interest in participating, I guess you can call Val or myself and we'll get some numbers out there to let people know.
It's on the website.
Right. Okay. Get us motivated.
We do hope people will step forward and volunteer for this event. I think it's great that the park board's trying to have an event down there for everyone to enjoy, so.
Is the park board, I guess, you said like blowups and things like that, are you looking for sponsorships or what are you?
Exactly. If somebody wanted to help sponsor, you know, some blowups and like I said, the fire department has done it for years with their festival, their Halloween festival that they have. Kids enjoy that stuff. It's inexpensive, they can play on it all day long. Like I said, we're trying to think of other neat ideas. But if you had a business that wanted to sponsor a 3-on-3 basketball tournament.
I was curious.
Yeah, something like that.
If you were to pay $100 for it.
Absolutely. Yeah, we thought of a home run derby. I thought different people can participate and a lot of people enjoy watching it and having that a certain time. Just throwing ideas out there that we could do at the park that day. And, and it's for all ages, you know, we didn't want it specifically for young bucks that can hit home runs, you know, we want it for the little kids. And if some people like enjoy bingo, we'd have that at the park pavilion and stuff like that, so.
Troy, you're going to have your summer festival.
What, the band?
You mean?
Band and beer.
Oh, the band night?
Yeah.
We're going to have a meeting for that, I think this week, so.
I'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Going on, it is not on your agenda, but it is the architectural review board met. And that board consisted of Tony Nicewander, Mike Bart, Diane Collins, and Nub Keys. Those were the ones present. We had a request to, someone wanted to put a wood burning boiler in out at Industrial Drive. So the architectural review committee met. And we were not in favor of, well, in the meantime, the person that wanted to do it had heard, you know, some objection to it, so he withdrew his request to do that. But we went ahead and met and we pretty much felt that it's not part of the manufacturing process and we wanted to keep the air as clean as we can. And so we did not want to allow a wood burning boiler or any type of burning out there. It was going to burn pallets. So we discussed, you know, other options to get rid of pallets without burning them, mainly being recycling and who that would be. So it was suggested that we go ahead and put that in our guidelines for Industrial Drive. So that's about all I can, you know, tell you. We will go on to council committee reports. The water and sewer committee met January 16. The minutes are in the packet. Do you have anything you want to say about that?
All right, we discussed a lot of it here. We're just, little discussion about the housing. Again, we'll move forward to the Wednesday meeting at 3:00 here.
Okay. Thank you. So are there any other committees that have met that have anything to report on? We will go on to the solicitor, or excuse me, the minister's report.
Most people have questions or whatever, they want two things I want to pass along. Rail got hit again probably last week. So sometime this spring, they'll come in to fix everything. It's probably going to get hit before the winter is over yet again. If anybody wants to tear it down, I'd be okay with that.
The bill we had for $400 on tonight's approved bills list.
It got hit after that, that they didn't get fixed and then it got hit yet again. I think it's cost us money.
Why don't we put guard rail out there like I said two or three times before it got hit?
Because whatever trucks are hitting us, they're going to be knocking the guard rail off.
But you're not going to, you're not going to deface a highway guard rail like you defaced that fence when you nick it.
Why don't you put a camera out there?
No, but anyway, if anybody sees it all dinged up, they're not going to fix it till spring, I mean, with this weather. The only other thing is the meeting tomorrow night or tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 with downtown business owners or anybody from the public to discuss the possible sidewalk grant application.
Are all of us aware what this is about? No?
Well, at least streetlight property was. There's an ODOT grant which, I guess I looked into and then ran it past the committee to replace curbs and sidewalks downtown. Then you could also get like new trash cans, you could get the streetlight post painted, um.
Bents.
Some, yeah, some benches. I should have brought all that stuff tonight. The rough cost for what originally, I'll look at, and I'm rounding off here, so it's not going to be accurate, around $250,000, which we were going to apply for 95% for ODOT to pay if it succeeded. So we'd be out of pocket about $40,000 if I remember. But the first steps, a letter of intent due to ODOT on February 1st. If we submit it, they could toss it out and then it's a done deal, you know, they're not going to do anything. If they say, yeah, go ahead with the second step, then there's a full application due around the 1st of May. But then again, we're running up against every other town and village in Ohio, so there's still a chance it'd get shot down and nothing would happen. So it's one of those, if they wanted to move forward, was at least taking the first step, see if it passes, fine. If it doesn't, then we're not spending any money other than maybe next year buying some trash cans and doing some other general sprucing up. We wouldn't mess with the sidewalks and curbs.
So the reason for the meeting is all of the downtown property owners have been invited to the meeting so that they can give their thoughts and opinions on doing a downtown revitalization project like this. And because when, last time we did sidewalks down there, the property owner paid for the first four feet closest to the building because we figured that's what was fair. Because all other property owners in town had an average of a four-foot sidewalk that they had to maintain on their properties. I think that's how we came up with the four feet. So we've invited all the downtown business people to come to this meeting and let us know what their opinions are about this. Does that sound right, Kent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they had some, at least, I think I've heard from four total. I did get another email today. Couple of them had some good questions that when I responded, I said, that's always something we can talk about.
And Kent also asked them if they wanted to get rid of trees or keep trees, so.
Well, yeah, because that'd be part of the grant coverage. If we reduce them, get rid of them all, I don't think you want to add any. Because then that's going to affect the grates because those all need to work, the electrical boxes.
So if you have an interest, please attend that meeting.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we vote now to allow him to take step one if he feels it necessary after his meeting tomorrow? Because we don't have another council meeting until February.
That works for me. That's a great idea.
Well, I would make the motion that.
Kent's hesitating, wait a minute.
Well, no, I don't think I need a vote. It's just a letter.
It's just a letter of intent. I mean, it's not binding or anything. You can give them your blessing if you want.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you want to give them a form one, I don't care.
What time's the meeting about?
3:00 here.
You want the street but?
Oh, yeah, because ultimately it's your decision. If by chance we'd make it through to the second round, then yeah, you got to pin down what you're doing, not doing. So, yeah, he ought to be here.
So that is tomorrow at 3:00?
Tomorrow at 3:00.
So Ron, did you feel so inclined to?
I wanted to matter of record, yes.
Okay.
It's fine.
I make the motion that we agree to allow Kent to move forward with his first application on the sidewalk grant due February 1st.
And you have second. Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Anything else on committees? For Kent Miller. Anything else for your minister's report?
No reserve.
Don't hold back.
I would see how the rest of the meeting goes, but now, I mean.
You already went all anti-tree on us, so.
All right.
You even put a Christmas tree up?
Yeah, Charlie Brown stuff.
Okay, we'll go on to the solicitor's report, please.
First thing I have is resolution 2019-01, second reading by caption only. Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Pogomire Design Group, Inc. for design work on the Chicago Avenue, West High Street. Storm sewer as part of Phase 2 of the long-term control plan.
Can I speak up on that?
Absolutely.
People forgot. I, if, this would be the second reading, since we are somewhat under, you know, some time constraints and I think it's going to take a while to get it figured out. Would council be okay with waiving the, I might phrase it wrong, so you might have to clear up, waiving the next reading, passing it tonight, but still having?
But not as an emergency.
Yeah, but.
So you just.
Still have that 30-day wait period.
Right. You just suspend the rules to pass it tonight without the, we'd do the third reading tonight and, but it wouldn't be an emergency.
Yeah, they still have the 30-day. And you work till like end of February, but I'd like to get them started on this as soon as we can. And if you don't, we'll do the three readings and wait 30 days and if you more weeks. So now it's however you want to do it. I guess, sorry, throw that out there.
I'm over, we suspend the rule, so.
Second half.
Oh, and before you vote, there's one thing to clear up. I guess, you got EMHT stuck in.
Oh, you're right.
In that section one.
We'll get that out.
Okay.
Oh, I got it after, I didn't delete it when I put the.
That's easy fix tomorrow.
Everything else.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Thanks, Kent.
I didn't see it till now. But anyway.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
So third reading, resolution 2019-01 by caption only. Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Pogomire Design Group, Inc. for design work on the Chicago Avenue, West High Street. Storm sewer as part of Phase 2 of the long-term control plan.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I have to report is I've been working with Mark on the body cam contract and I've maybe not found a way to completely get us out of it, but maybe with less, less obligation than we currently have. So he and I are going to talk about that tomorrow. He's waiting so that he can get back with it. And I know there's some other issues to do with the in-car equipment and trying to deal with that. So trying to do it, be politically correct about it, not upset anybody, but there is something in process there that I can, hopefully after Mark and I talk about it, we can give you an update the next time.
Do you have anything else in the works, Troy? Pending?
I believe so.
Does anybody have any questions?
Did you talk to Troy about the letter that we had talked about in our nuisance board meeting?
No.
That's all in the minutes today, but we can talk about it.
Okay.
I've got a question for Troy, actually, from the CRA, from the CRA perspective and village recording, as far as recording ordinances and things like that, do you need anything specifically for that?
As far as the meetings or?
As far as like record keeping, so if the, and that's something that's never been discussed, I guess, with council as far?
They should keep minutes, certainly, if there's meetings and things like that.
And as far as anything that's approved, record keeping, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely.
One dash one or?
It could be anyway, as long as it's probably done by year would be my guess. Unless it'd be like, you know, 2019 dash one or however you're doing it when you're taking applications. And then just so you can differentiate, that's the easiest way to just do it chronologically as they come in and as they're voted on and keeping minutes about what's happened so that those can be turned over and maintained.
When they approve a CRA, do they need to bring it to council?
Trying to remember from when we did all that, it's been so long ago.
Okay.
They, they're, because there has to be an agreement. They have to enter an agreement, so the council may have to approve the entering the agreement.
Okay.
I'll look into that and I'll get back to Diane, she can let you know.
Is there a time window on a CRA?
Is there a what?
A time window to apply for?
Um, we did put an outside time, but I think it can be extended, I mean, it's long. I'm going to say it was like 20 years or something, wasn't it? You mean per year?
So if I want to cast a ground, they have for a CRA?
Oh, it has to be, you can't now because it's.
Prior to.
It's already been done.
I think it's 12 months prior.
12 months prior.
I think it's 12 months prior.
12 months prior, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't started, we started this, Mark.
Right.
I was really asking for that shit.
Yeah.
Has your group started meeting yet, Taylor, the CRA committee?
We've had a couple meetings, um, I think, well, no, sorry, one meeting. Um, there's been emails and correspondence back and forth, but as far as getting an application approved and things like that, because it's, the residential portion just needs to be approved by the commission.
Right.
It's the way that I understand it.
I think that's true.
From the valley perspective, and then if it's commercial, then that has to go to the state. So from a residential perspective, we can sort of set our own rules essentially if you wanna gather, so.
There's guidelines, right?
Right.
There's certainly guidelines, yes.
Yeah.
But it's all-
Okay.
One short question, uh, the annexation of property, does Mike Bailey call me and give me an address for it?
Yeah, it's gotta sit, uh, I told Cheryl today, it's gotta sit for a period of time and then we'll pass what we need to do, and then she sends, um, there's like three originals of it, one gets sent down to the Secretary of State, one gets sent to the auditor, and missing another one.
How long has that been going?
I think it's like 60 days.
I believe the treasure too.
Treasure is the other one, yeah, that's why there's three. But it's 60 days from the date that we received the materials from the commissioners, which has been over a week ago now, so, we're in that process.
All right, we will move on then to the department heads. Police chief?
I have nothing, Troy just spoke about it.
All right. Thank you. Fire and EMS chief?
On the table tonight was EMS runs for the year and the month of December. Total EMS responses for the year was 491, and John has it broke down by zones, which is the townships or the village near Mutual Lake. Any questions on any of that? I hand you tonight the run report for the entire department firing EMS. Total runs of 504, and the reason that's tempered from EMS was those, the 491 was just runs that the squad went on. They don't, if it was on Mutual Lake or something, that's why it's 504, it's different. And on the back was a breakdown of what the, how many runs were what. We had 15 building fires, which was 3% of our runs. See by the front, EMS rescue and emergency was 76.79% of our runs, so 77% of our runs are just EMS runs, basically. And I received some good news Friday. The state fire marshal grant had been awarded, and the Village of Hicksville received $48,399.21 to go towards Mark's radios. And I think that was like 12 portables and five mobiles to get us started off. The, uh, there was only, there's over 1,200 million requests for this grant. They only awarded 3 million. And Defiance County got close to half a million of them.
Great.
So countywide, we was awarded the grant and we're off on getting radios switched over.
Are we one of the last in the state of Ohio to go to the Mark system?
Yes, there's like seven counties left to handle, yeah.
Well, that's great, great news.
And we still have the federal grant out to pick up some more of the cost of the radios.
How many radios is that, that you need yet?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. Um, any questions for me?
Thank you for the report. It was interesting to see the runs and the calls and the-
But you know what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
You say.
Thank you.
Park director, Val, do you have anything to report, to step up to the microphone for?
No, mic cover won't shut.
Oh, I thought you would have more to add. Thank you. All right, we will go on to the fiscal officers' report.
Now, you may not have questions, a lot of you haven't been able to look at the reports. Um, I put in the purchaser's report for 2019, the first one. Um, the fund status is up to date, the December police department collections report, um, you have a, a division of liquor control report, um, the 2018 real estate tax listing, and if you notice, there's some notations on there of some new property. Um, you have the 2018 building permit listing and the fourth quarter media com franchise fees.
Okay, the only thing on the real estate, I'm still surprised I didn't hear from you.
What's that?
I'm still surprised I didn't hear from you.
Oh, I was just waiting to hear what you said.
Overall, they didn't go up much, but off to the side where it says that library addition for $417. Since the library remodeled last year, or in 2018, I guess, they created a new parcel, so it doesn't exist, but that's, it's for their remodeling. So I've got to file all the tax exemption paperwork to get that knocked back down, you know, to where we're just paying the special assessments. And it's not been very easy to do, but I think I've just about got it wrapped up, but it might be a year till that $417 gets rebated back to us. So that's, that's the biggest jump in, um, in the land taxes. Overall, they didn't go up much. Those three new ones at the top are the West Earth, they're lots that you bought last, last spring, summer, whatever.
Kent, why are us, the taxes on lots 10 and 11 in the industrial park, why are these $1,600? Is that where that tower is?
Hmm, no, I think that incorporates all of our MDs.
N1.
MD lots, all of them, not just.
Says 48.8 acres.
Yeah, they don't split it up till we sell it.
I always find the Mike Bailey zoning permit report interesting because, um, looking at this for 2018, it looks like we had, um, three new homes built in Hicksville and, uh, several pool, swimming pool permits, some sheds and garages and stuff, but then on the backside, you see where we had like 25 cement permits, and I imagine those are all sidewalks, most of them. So there were quite a few sidewalk projects done, so. I was gonna wait and do this proclamation regarding, um, the Career Center, February 3rd at our regular council meeting, but the letter said they want me to, oh, February, that would be, sorry, February 4th would be our next meeting, but they want me to bring this to Ford County on February 1st, Friday passed, so I thought I would just read it tonight, this is not on your agenda, sorry, but I will read it. This proclamation, whereas February 1st to the 28th, 2019, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. Whereas, career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas, students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase student engagement and achievement. And whereas, career and technical education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as pursuit of established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas, leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CT-related fields, excuse me, CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. And whereas, career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas, ensuring that employers have access to a qualified workforce is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued American economic growth and global competitiveness. Now therefore, I, Diane Collins, mayor of the Village of Hicksville, do hereby proclaim February 1st through the 28th, 2019, as Career and Technical Education Month at Hicksville, excuse me, in Hicksville, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. So, definitely support them and they definitely have a need. The last thing that I have is, um, you know, the Defiance Economic Development, um, has the, um, the community investment sector of it, and we have private investors that contribute money to the CIC, and those funds are used to, uh, help with workforce development in the county and help bring jobs to our communities. And this list was passed out at my meeting on Thursday, and I would just like to recognize the local business and industry and private individuals that contribute to the, um, CIC investor, investors program. Um, and I, and, you know, this is such an important thing, if you're, you know, thinking that you would like to contribute to that, I'm sure that they would appreciate, um, your help in that, because I think this benefits our whole county and especially Hicksville, we've had a lot of help from them. Those local people are APT Manufacturing Solutions, Community Memorial Hospital, Five Acre Mill, FWT, Gelford Realty, Hicksville Bank, Hicksville Township, Jim Schmidt, King Craig Insurance, Smith &amp; Brown Funeral Home. So I would like to specifically tell those people thank you for supporting economic development in Hicksville. And, that's the end of the mayor's report, I think. Does anybody, is there anyone in the audience that has anything that they would like to bring up to council?
I have another question.
Would you like to go to the microphone?
Yeah, I'll let that microphone on.
Thank you.
I, uh, I would, this isn't on the agenda, but I don't know if it has to be or it needs to be, or how we do it. So I, the property I was coffee shop is at, um, I've got it annexed down to the city, and I'd like to put a driveway in off of 2, right beside the township drive. The township's giving me another 30 days, they let me use the drive for 90 days, they've extended it another 30, and I'd like to put a drive in. So I went and talked to Mike Bailey and asked him what I need to do to put a drive in. He gave me a permit through the township, which I called Warren Schlotter and said, "Do I need to put in a Calvert?" Warren looked at it and said, "No, no Calvert." But he said, "Before you put that in, I would call the state and make sure the state signs off on that driveway." So I did that. And Pat O'Daly with ODOT said, "Oh, man, that's a touchy area out there." He said, "You can go to, uh, Columbus and appeal and ask for a driveway permit." Now, I don't know if any of you guys have ever went and appealed anything, I had to go appeal a fire system for the school out there, it's like going to court, and most people take an attorney, so I really didn't wanna go appeal. So I asked Pat, I said, "How do I get a driveway permit put in there?" He said, "If you annex it into the city, it's out of the state's hands, the city has the full control if you put a drive in. Or you can divide the property into two lots, because by law, you can't get a property that doesn't have access to it." So I said, "Okay." So I could take that .8 of an acre and probably get Troy's old firm to resurvey it and make it into two parcels and have a drive on 49 and have a drive off of 2. Lot of nonsense, so I'm asking, what do I need to do to get a approval to put a drive in? Mike Bailey really wasn't sure on what to do, he said, "Why don't you ask council?"
I am, this was brought to my attention before the meeting, and I believe I'm going to send it to the Streetlight Property Committee.
Okay.
And that is Eric Bassett, Ron Beverly, and Ron Jones.
Okay.
And they can discuss it and bring a, um, I guess, their thoughts to the entire council.
So, just so we know, if that driveway doesn't put in, there's no coffee shop in Hicksville. Not that that's a threat or anything, but the way the flow of the traffic goes in, it goes on one side and out the other side. And, uh, we've been using the townships now for almost, I don't know, four months now, and I don't, I haven't heard any complaints of the traffic flow out there, I don't see any problems with it, so if any of you have heard complaints, please let me know, but it's a major factor on if we're building a coffee shop building is the driveway.
And I was copied on, at that email originally about the state stating that, that if it was annexed into the village, that it would be a village decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anything else?
I'll make a switch to German again. I second Larry already made a motion.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Whatever you want to do.
Bridgeway?
Why am I on? We have to talk about it.
Thank you everyone for coming.